Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, June 23rd, 2022. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent.
Here.
Counselor Genatino.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy.
Here.
Counselor LaCastro.
Here.
Mayor Quill.
Here. Would you please join us in the place of...
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you remain standing for a moment, a silent prayer would be required. Thank you, please be seated. Mr. Clerk, public announcements, if any?
Thanks, Mayor. We do have a couple of announcements this evening. First is that this is the fourth Thursday of the month of June and the final city council meeting for the month. The council meeting next week will not happen because it's the fifth Thursday of the month. So the next time that the council will convene will be on... In July. The first Thursday of July is... The seventh, yep, Thursday, July 7th at 5:00 p.m. So no city council meeting next weekend, Thursday. And then on June 27th, Monday evening, at 6:30 p.m., the zoning board of appeals will hold its monthly meeting here in council chambers at Memorial City Hall. And we have lots of summer events and stuff kicking off. On the screen is this coming Saturday, our Parks and Downtown bid are sponsoring the Sizzle in Summer Kickoff. That's in the evening here in the downtown area between Exchange Street Plaza and the Cory Territorial Center. And then earlier that day, from 10 till noon on Genesee Street, will be the first summer Saturday market of the year. And there's going to be music and vendors and everything on Genesee Street in the area of Exchange Street. So lots going on downtown, following up on last week's Juneteenth festival, so that's all I have this evening.
Very good, thank you. Ceremonial presentations. New York State Conference of Mayors has sent a certificate for approximately five or six of our employees. One rediscence, if you record?
Sure. This is a letter from the New York State Conference of Mayors and other municipal officials from Peter A. Baines, the executive director. Dear Mayor, since 1961, the Conference of Mayors has annually honored public officials who have served a single community for 25 years or more by awarding them a certificate of public service. The privilege of presenting the actual certificate is reserved for each municipality thereby affording you the opportunity to extend recognition and appreciation to the individual officials with whatever formality you consider. Conference of Mayors is pleased that you, along with many other municipalities, have chosen to honor these individuals. We join you in congratulating these municipal officials who have dedicated themselves to public service. Sure. There was several certificates, and I think what's going to happen tonight is the mayor's just going to hand these over to city manager Diger, and the city manager will present them to people. But Roger Anthony, our deputy police chief, 25 years of service. John Rivick, 25 years of service. Scott Herrick, 25 years of service. Brian Polkovich, 25 years of service. Thomas Gabeck, 25 years of service. And Chris Deal, 25 years of service. It's funny, because I remember when a couple of these guys started, it seems like yesterday.
Those last two, 30 years of service.
Are they, 30 years?
You go back even further.
Yep. That's all I have.
You're five years older than you thought you were.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. Public to be heard.
At this point in time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address. For the record, please keep remarks to three minutes or less, and please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Thank you. This time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? Oh, you're going to let us off early tonight, aren't you? No one? Very well, we'll have a second public to be heard near the end of the meeting. Approval meeting minutes, we have them?
Yep.
June 16th?
June 9th.
June 9th. Approval of meeting minutes from June 9th of this year. We have found Counselor Kent, seconded by Counselor LaCastro. Discussions, corrections, deletion, please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Hi.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.
Hi. Others available in two weeks.
Yep.
Mr. Diger, city managers report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick updates. Parking garage project is moving along, and they're actually winding down most of the heavy work that's being done over there. So hopefully, over the next few weeks, we'll see some more of the parking garage open up and get back to some normal operations over there. Excuse me. The State Street Plaza project and State Street, the section of State Street between Genesee and Dill is moving along. Concrete work is pretty much wrapped up down there. If you've had an opportunity to walk down through there, they are working on pavers along the street and finishing up pavers within the plaza itself. We're hoping, weather permitting and contractors being able to fit it into their schedule, there may be paving happening on that street as soon as tomorrow, but certainly next week we should be close to wrapping up the work on State Street itself. And then we'll have some landscaping still to wrap up within the plaza, but it's getting close, and it looks really good. If you have a chance to get down there and peek through the fence, it's looking good. The last thing I have is this week, we got our monthly update from the state comptroller related to our sales tax. And sales tax for the month of May was up approximately 15% compared to the prior... To last year's month of May. And we seem to be, at this point, holding study at around 14 or 15% increase over the previous calendar year on a month-to-month and quarterly basis, so sales tax is doing well at this point.
That's it, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Reports from members of council, councilors, anyone? Very well. Staff vendor presentation. Preservation League of New York State with Andrew Robley. Mr. Prentis, Historic Preservation, Andrew, welcome back.
Hello. Most of you know me, I'm Andrew Robley. It's great to be here in this wonderful historic building. I'm here in my capacity as the president of the Preservation Association of Central New York, or PACNE, which is a historic preservation advocacy group. And our service area includes Keighoga County, Cortlandt County, Madison, Onondaga, and Oswego Counties. And we cover about 3/4 of a million people, 430 National Register-listed or National Historic Landmark buildings, and thousands of other undesignedated buildings. PACNE has invited Katie Eggers Cuomo from the Preservation League to come talk to us about, or share with you, some information about National Register-listed districts, similar to the one on South Street, but in this case with a focus on being able to utilize historic rehabilitation tax credits to redevelop these properties. And this is something that a lot of communities across the country, but in particular, New York State, has taken advantage of over the years. And PACNE believes it would be a great step forward for the city of Auburn. There's two potentially eligible districts, downtown and along Genesee Street. And so, you know, we want the expert to come and give us a broad view of that. So having said that, I do want to also add that on July 20th, we're going to have a very similar presentation, which is open to the property owners downtown, at the Havana Room in the Phoenix Building at 6 o'clock, that's July 20th. And we'll have some representatives from the State Historic Preservation Office there as well, so. Right now, I'm going to hand it over to Katie, who's going to talk to us about the district and tax credits. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if there's any Auburn-specific questions, I'll stand by to answer them.
Okay, thanks for having me here. I'm Katie Como from the Preservation League of New York State, as Andy said. I'm a Rochester native, so although my job is in Albany, I'm a lot closer to here. A Rochester native, and I live there now as well, so I work remotely. So I'm not going to read all of this, but the Preservation League is the statewide nonprofit historic preservation organization. We do a lot of different things around the state, focused largely on the benefits of historic preservation for economic benefits, as well as we're increasingly focused on the climate change benefits of reusing rather than throwing away historic buildings. You know, obviously, the recycling on a grand scale is certainly a good thing to be pursuing. We have a lot of different programs. Again, I'm not going to read all of this, but one that I... A couple that I want to point out is our Seven to Save program. We just announced our new Seven to Save list for the next two years. That's a list of endangered properties that are going to get extra attention from us over the next couple of years. We also have grant and loan programs that I'm going to mention, and we are the statewide advocacy and public policy organization for preservation. So the National Register, the name is a little bit confusing to people sometimes for reasons that I'll get into throughout the presentation, but basically, it's kind of the honor roll of historic preservation. So it's a nationwide list of properties all over the country that are recognized for their significance, but it is largely an honorary recognition. The origins of it go back to the 1960s, the time of urban renewal, when the government was just kind of demolishing things willy-nilly. And so the initial impetus for it was to protect the places that people cared about from urban renewal and highway construction and things like that. And so as a result of that, one of the themes I'm going to be emphasizing throughout this is that it's a program that really involves incentives without kind of restrictions on property owners, so a lot of carrots and not sticks. The basic criteria for being listed in the National Register are first... First have to do with age. Typically, something is 50 years old or older. That's a guideline, not a strict rule, but that's kind of what we're talking about in calling something historic. And then a property typically has to have integrity, meaning that physically it has a resemblance to what it was historically. You kind of can imagine that perhaps the person who lived in the building could come back and recognize it, not that nothing's been changed, but it's, you know, pretty much as it was. And then it needs to meet one of the four criteria here, A through D. A being an association with an event, and that could be a thing that happened one time, like a battle or the signing of the Declaration of Independence or something like that, but it could be something that unfolded over a longer period of time. The event, the evolution of an industry, or a business district coming into its full potential over time. B has to do with a significant person. This could be a nationally significant person like Harriet Tubman, but it could be someone who's got more of a local significance. And that's actually an important thing to know about the National Register. It's not about national significance, it could be, but it can also be local or regional or statewide significance. It's really the places that matter to the local community more so than anything else. Criterion C is about architecture or design, so whether it's a... An example of an architectural style, or landscape architecture, or the work of a master architect or landscape architect. And then D has to do with archaeology. I'm not going to really talk about that, it's not my area of expertise, but things can be listed in the National Register because they're archaeological sites. So people typically think of the National Register in terms of buildings, but there are other property types, too. So something could be a structure like a bridge or a dam, an engineering work, an object, usually that would be a sculpture. This is a hitching post. You wouldn't list a hitching post by itself, but that's an example of something that could be within a National Register district, which I'll talk about in a second. A site, which is usually something like a cemetery, or a park, or a battlefield, so a landscape. And then the four... The last one is a district, so that's a collection of any or all of the other categories. So in the case of a district, that's where kind of the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. So you might have a residential neighborhood, a downtown commercial district, a farm, something like that, where you've got multiple properties. Perhaps each one on its own isn't... Is not individually significant, but as a group is where they have their significance. So in Auburn, you probably know there already is one National Register-listed historic district, the South Street Area Historic District, and then there are others that have been officially determined as being eligible, so they could be listed if there is an interest in doing so. And that's just the South Street Area Historic District, the boundaries, in case that's easier to kind of understand what that is, so I hope you're all familiar with that. The impetus for going through the process of sponsoring a National Register district doesn't come from the government, it comes from the local side of things. So it might be a local preservation organization like PACNE that might initiate something like this. It could be a neighborhood association, some kind of, you know, group of residents, individuals might do that. So it's something that comes kind of from the grassroots is where the interest in that comes from. So the State Historic Preservation Office would assist, but doesn't come in and tell people, "This is what you should be doing." And then the local sponsor of a district is typically responsible for doing a lot of the outreach to help the neighbors understand what's going on. They might distribute leaflets, have public meetings, things like that, and in some cases might do some of the work of putting that together themselves, although usually it's a consultant who takes the lead in that. Up until I came to the Preservation League, I was a preservation consultant, so that's a lot of what I did. Oh, that was cool. So a lot of times, well, one of the ways people pay for National Register nominations is through Preserve New York Grants, which is through the Preservation League. So that can pay for survey work, for National Register nominations, and other projects like building condition reports, landscape reports, things like that. So that's just a little bit about that. So if people are interested in that, I'm happy to talk about that process. And this is just the last round of Preserve New York Grants, just so you can see, those were all over the state. We try to reach as many areas of the state as possible. Okay, so there are a lot of myths about the National Register. One that we come across is people thinking that if they get their property listed in the National Register, it's going to be protected forever. And so often, if you've got, you know, a family who's had the house in their same family for multiple generations, and they think, "We want to protect this even though we can no longer own it," we're going to get it listed in the National Register, and then it's going to be preserved forever. But unfortunately, that's a myth, because there are no restrictions on what private property owners do with a building, whether it's a house, a commercial building, anything else listed in the National Register, as long as they're using their own money. So we did see this happen recently. I forget what town it was in, in the Finger Lakes, where somebody called me and said, "We sold that..." "We got..." "We went through the process of getting our house listed in the National Register before we sold it, and now the new owners are tearing it down." Well, unfortunately, there's nothing you can do about that. It doesn't... Does not prevent people from tearing down National Register-listed buildings as long as they use their own money to do it. So related to that, people think that if they own a building listed in the National Register, whether individually or in a district, they can't make any changes. They can't paint it what they want, they can't add a new addition, they can't change the siding. But there are two. Again, the National Register doesn't prevent private owners from doing anything they want. They can paint it whatever color they want, they can put on an addition, they can tear it down, as I just said, as long as they're using their own money to do so. What it does protect is the government coming in and doing something to your property, and that's, you know, going back to how this got started with the demolition of Penn Station and things like that, where the initial impetus behind creating the National Register was to stop the government from tearing down important buildings for highways and urban renewal. So the same thing is still true, or that's kind of how that came about, and so that's the main protection that you have. If DOT is coming through and wants to put a highway through your neighborhood, and your neighborhood is listed in the National Register, it does put some obstacles in, you know, in terms of that. That can't just happen without a lot of review and public comment and things like that. So that's really what it's designed to do, is not to prevent private owners from doing what they want, but to prevent the government from coming in and doing things like demolition and other harmful actions that would hurt historic properties. So there's a good reason why people are often very confused about this, because there are two different types of landmark designation that are totally separate. It's the National Register being one, and then local historic districts being a completely separate thing. So the National Register is the program that's managed by the National Park Service in cooperation with the State Historic Preservation Office. It's available throughout the country. Any place you live in the United States, you can get something listed in the National Register. No restrictions on what people do with their own property, some protection from government actions, like I just said, and some incentives, which I'll talk about in a couple minutes that are associated with that. A completely separate program is administered at the local level, and that has to do... That is called the local either historic district, or to keep things separate, some places call them preservation districts. And that's something that is enacted by the local government through their local ordinance process, and has a local preservation board, sometimes called an architectural review board or Historic Preservation Commission, there's different names for it. But that's all done at the local level, and that's where the real teeth are. So the reason for that, of course, is that we want, if we're going to have these, you know, any kind of design review or restrictions, it's best for that to be closest to the actual people, so that you have the ability to speak directly to that, those commission members, they're your neighbors, they're the people who live right in your community, rather than having the state or federal government have that power. That power is at the local level. So this is where, when people talk about, "I can't, you know, build this addition, I have to go to the Preservation Commission," that's because of the local district, not because of the National Register. So the... So that does bring in some protections in that maybe you can't, you know, just go out and do whatever you want with your property without going through that design review process, but neither can your neighbor. So that helps kind of protect that character of that community as a whole. So it's not to say things can't change, but that there is this design review process to make sure that when things do change, it's done with consideration to the character and history of the neighborhood. There usually aren't any incentives associated with local districts. Some municipalities have them, but most don't. And so in Auburn, this is a little bit more confusing than in some places, because here, your National Register district and your local district do have the same boundaries. So people who live in the National Register district are also in the local district. But again, the protections are coming from the fact that they're in the local district, not from the fact that they're in the National Register district. And then this isn't rare necessarily that they have the same boundaries, but in a lot of places, they're different. So in the city of Rochester, for example, there's a Highland Park National Register district that is completely different, has totally different boundaries from the local Highland Mount Hope district. So they have a little bit different names, a little bit different boundaries. Here, they're the same. So I can certainly understand why people might be confused about it, but it is different, two different things. Another myth that does have some basis in reality is the idea that the National Register is for the most, you know, high-style fancy buildings, George Washington slept here kind of thing. And that's because at the beginning, that was kind of the way it was used. It was to protect buildings like Penn Station that people couldn't believe were just being torn down without any review. So, you know, George Washington did sleep here, and the property on the left, that's Mount Vernon, so that is, you know, listed in the National Register, of course. And then on the right is a Rosenwald School, which is one of the schools built in the South to educate African-American children in the early, I think, early 20th century. So not a high-style fancy building, but something that has, you know, significance to the community. So as time has gone on, we've recognized that there's, you know, history is very diverse, there are a lot of things worthy of protection, whether or not they're the most, you know, outstanding examples of architecture in their community. People often want to know what being listed in the National Register is going to do to their property values, and think, either they think it's going to make them go up, or they think they're going to make them go down. And in reality, there just isn't really a lot of evidence that it has a strong influence one way or the other, and that's because there aren't those restrictions that would kind of protect your property values if you're in a local district. So there might be, you know, they've found maybe some slight benefit in the fact that there are incentives available, so that might make a National Register district a little bit more appealing, but it doesn't tend to be a very strong effect. And it's a little hard to sort that out anyway, because the qualities that make something eligible for the National Register are probably also qualities that lead to stable property values in the first place. So the fact that you have largely intact streetscapes and, you know, a high quality of construction and things like that, well, that's probably an area that would already have pretty stable property values. So, you know, I guess the good news is it doesn't tend to decrease property values, the bad news is it doesn't tend to make them, you know, shoot up either, depending on which way you want to look at that, I guess, is what the good news or bad news is. A myth that I wish was more true is that there's a lot of funding available to people who own properties in National Register districts. People, I can't tell you how often we get this call at the Preservation League, when I used to work at the Landmark Society of Western New York, all the time, "Well, where's... How do I get the money to fix up my house?" Well, unfortunately, it's just, there's not much out there. But there is some. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the tax credits, and then, as Andy said, on our July 20th presentation, we're going to go into a lot more detail about this. So hopefully, I'm not going to be able to read that from over here. There are four different... Oh, so these are tax credit programs, that's kind of the first thing to know. It's not a deduction, it's a credit. So it's a dollar-for-dollar reduction of your income tax liability, which makes it a very nice incentive. And it's not for just owning the property, I should say, it's for doing a significant amount of rehabilitation work on the property. And there's four different credits available here in New York State. We have the federal commercial rehab credit for commercial properties, income-producing. And then that is paired with a state commercial tax credit, which I'll tell you a little bit more in a minute. There's a homeowner rehab credit for owner-occupied properties, and then we have a newly reestablished barn tax credit. So for the most part, with the exception of the barn tax credit, which has a little bit different requirements, typically, to qualify for the tax credits, the building has to be either individually listed in the National Register or in a district, and if it's in a district, it has to be contributing, because districts have properties that are contributing, meaning they are part of the history of the district, and then maybe a newer property might be called non-contributing. So it has to be a contributing building. And then for, again, for most of these programs, you need to get advance approval from the State Historic Preservation Office for the work you want to do. And so this is the exception to the, "You can do whatever you want with your property." If you're taking the government funding to do your project, you have to follow their rules. And those rules are the Secretary of the Interior's standards for rehabilitation, which I'll talk about in a second. And then you also, you don't get out of meeting, you know, all your local requirements, you have to still meet zoning and any other relevant laws regarding what you do with your property. So the commercial credit, the federal credit, is for properties in any kind of income-producing use, so it's often used for apartments, hotels, commercial buildings, any kind of income-producing use. And it's a 20% credit, and there's a new... There was a change in the tax law a few years ago that it now has to be spread out over five years, so you don't get the 20% all at once, you take it over a five-year period. And this can be used for any size of project, and it's a 20% of the qualified rehabilitation expenses, meaning the money you put into rehabilitating the property, you get 20% of that back as a credit. That is kind of twinned with a state rehab tax credit for commercial properties, which it's all the same paperwork, so you apply for one credit, and if you're eligible for the state credit, you get that as well. So you don't have to fill out separate paperwork or anything. Almost all the requirements are the same. The main difference is that it's only available to properties in qualified census tracts, which has to do with the census tract level income, income level. And it's not for super-low income necessarily, it's kind of low and moderate, just the main reason is to make sure that Manhattan didn't take these credits for like ridiculously expensive projects. And there's also, for the same reason, there's a maximum credit of $5 million, but that's a 20... That's the credit amount, not the project amount. So the eligible census tracts in this area are in the kind of darker yellow, so you can see that that's, you know, that's all of the city of Auburn, I believe. So that's pretty good. And again, it doesn't matter what the person taking the credit, what their income level is, it's the fact that this whole area has been determined eligible. So this is relevant to the state commercial credit I was just talking about, the state homeowner credit I'm about to talk about, doesn't apply to the barn tax credit that I'll get to at the end. So this is the homeowner tax credit, largely the same kind of qualifying criteria, so it has to be in the National So, it has to be in the National Register. And it's a 20% credit. I should say, going back, I forgot to mention, because this is new. For the Commercial Credit, if the project cost is under $2.5 million, it's a 30% credit. And that's on top of the federal. So, if you're getting the 20% federal credit and you're also getting the State Credit, if your project is under $2.5 million, that's 20% plus 30%, so 50% of your project cost. If it's over $2.5 million, that's a total of 40%. So, this is a separate program. This is if you're in a homeowner-occupied residential building. This one is a little bit more limited in terms of the, there is an upper limit on your credit, which is $50,000. You have to spend a minimum of $5,000 on your project. And at least 5% of it has to be on the exterior. But they're pretty flexible about that. It could be replacing your roof. And it doesn't mean you have to go back to a wood shingle roof if that's what it had originally. If you've got an asphalt roof and you're replacing it with a similar asphalt roof, well, that gets you past $5,000 pretty fast. If you're only doing, let's say, you're painting the outside and doing some interior rehab, as long as you spend 5% on the exterior, you can do, you know, a lot of interior work as well. And this too, does require that you're in one of those eligible census tracts. The Barn Credit just came into effect this year. There was one years ago that was, when the tax code changed at the federal level, this, for whatever reason, got kind of knocked off the table. But it's back this year. And this is meant to be even more flexible than the Homeowner Credit because the building doesn't even have to be listed in the National Register. It just has to have been in agriculture or agriculture-related use. And that could include carriage houses. It doesn't have to be listed in the National Register. It just has to have been built before 1946. And again, it's a 20% of the amount you spend on the rehab. There's no cap. So, whatever amount you spend, you get 20% of that back, as long as you spend at least $5,000. And they really are trying to make this as easy for people to use as possible. So, I think they're able to go back, I think it's five years even from now, that if someone already has done the work, as long as they photographed it before and also after, you might be able to get the credit retroactively for this one. But typically, for all of these, you really are supposed to get the approval ahead of time because otherwise, you can't be certain that your work is going to be approved. So, the standards that people have to follow are called the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. And it is rehabilitation, which is separate from restoration. So, restoration would mean you're going back to the historic appearance. Rehabilitation means you're kind of starting with what you have and trying to keep any work in character with what you have. But the expectation is there will be changes. Often, this is for something that's changing use. And so, obviously, if you've got, let's say, a historic warehouse that's being turned into apartments, you're going to have to make a lot of changes to make that happen. And as long as it kind of keeps a sense of what the character of the building was, that, you know, that is okay. So, often, issues come up around things like windows and things like that. But basically, the idea is if what you have can be kept and repaired and reused, keep it. If it can't, you try as best as you can to match what's already there. And any new work should be compatible with the character of what's already there. And yet, not try to completely blend into this, to the extent that you can't even tell what's new and what's old. So, we can go over the standards in a lot more detail in the other presentation. But just to say, this is kind of common sense, best practices in preservation is what you have to follow. This is just kind of a lot of the different benefits of the tax credits in terms of being a really valuable tool for economic revitalization, especially in upstate New York. We've seen just incredible success. I think Buffalo really led the way. They caught on a little quicker than everybody else that this was a great tool for reusing abandoned buildings and bringing life back into old neighborhoods. Syracuse was probably next. And then, Rochester is a little slow. And then, you know, the smaller towns and cities are really, doing some really interesting work now in terms of taking their main streets and bringing new life back into those areas. And I think with the new 30% credit, the fact that it's for smaller projects, the credit is now 30% instead of 20%, I think we're going to be seeing a lot more of that for the smaller projects. And that was the idea, was that let the smaller villages and cities in upstate New York really start to see the same advantages that the bigger cities have seen. Because it's a lot of effort to do a tax credit project. A lot of those costs are sort of fixed, whether your project is $2.5 million or $50 million in terms of some of the attorney's fees and consultants and things like that. So, making it a bigger credit is, I think, going to be extremely helpful for the smaller communities. So, that is what I had there. Wanted to leave plenty of time for questions, if people have any. And also, make sure you have all of our contact information. We're on all the different apps and things. Happy to share whatever information would be helpful if you have questions. And then, again, we'll be back for July 20th for a little more detailed conversation about all of this. Yeah?
Yes. Thank you so much for presenting today. I have a couple of questions. You mentioned that this is brought forth by grassroots organization within the community. And does it have to be approved by the local board and councils for this to be? Can you explain what the next step might be?
Yeah.
If there is the demand for?
Sure, sure. And often municipal governments do, will initiate this as well. So, I should have said that as well. But sometimes, it's a local planning commission or a local preservation board or someone like that who takes the lead. So, the process essentially is that whoever wants to sponsor the nomination gets in touch with the State Historic Preservation Office to make sure that the district that you're thinking about, you know, to kind of talk through what the boundaries are that you're interested in, see what they feel meets their criteria, and figure out what would be kind of a sensible area to start looking at. And then, once you've kind of come to some understanding about that, then whoever's going to be sponsoring the nomination, whether that's the local preservation group or the municipality, you know, figures out how they're going to pay for it and usually would hire a consultant to do it. I can't think of any really example, well, of course, I was a preservation consultant, so that's the ones I worked on. But it does require some very specialized writing and research and things like that. So, it's not something that's easy for just the typical person who doesn't have that training to do. That would kind of be the process, to work with the State Historic Preservation Office. And then, as early as possible, the sponsor should be reaching out to the people who live in the district, make sure they know what's going on, or the business owners, if it's a commercial district. Because there is a process for, you don't have to get people to opt in, but people do have the option to, it's not opt-out, but to voice an objection if they're not, if they're opposed to it for whatever reason. Typically, if you have enough public outreach, at a time, there's very little opposition because people will understand that there's no downside to this. There's only upside, especially in a commercial neighborhood where people have access to tax credits. But there always are some people who don't get the message and don't understand it and will write a letter of objection. So, it's typical with one of these that there will be a few objections. But as long as that's less than 50% of the owners, it can go ahead. If more than half the owners object, then, and they have to like file a certified letter of objection, then it can go ahead. The State Historic Preservation Office assigned, office staff assigned to this region will kind of take it from there and kind of shepherd it through the approval process at the state, which is there's a State Historic Preservation Review Board. I forget exactly what they're called. But that's made up of kind of preservation professionals from around the state who review it and see if it meets their criteria. And if it gets to that level, then it goes to the federal government and gets passed at the National Park Service level. So, unless, now, is Auburn a certified local government? So, yeah, so the, so there is also a notification process. And I can't remember exactly how that works. But in the case of a certified local government, which is just a, it's kind of a state program that indicates that you all are following best preservation practices, the Preservation Board, I think, would be notified and have an opportunity to comment as well. So, that's kind of where the local buy-in comes in. As well, it's just there's a requirement for public meetings. There's, you know, definitely a lot of outreach and public input opportunities there, too.
Great. I just want to say, so the incentives are for developers to get tax credits to, within these districts, to maintain the historic character. But as you had mentioned early on, that it does not limit, it doesn't limit, or it's not as limiting as even the local historic district. So, I know that that has been an issue. This is more, for lack of a better term, seems more open as long as they, if they do apply for the specific funding from this state and federal government, that they do abide by this. But just because it's in a historic district, National Historic District, it doesn't preclude them from doing whatever they want with that property.
Right. As long as they're using their own money, they can do whatever they want. If they're getting a grant from the state or federal government, if they're getting tax credits, if they're doing certain projects that need state or federal approval, which I think that's pretty rare. But, you know, so if you're using government money, you have to follow the government's rules. If you're not, you just do whatever you, do whatever you want. As long as, unless you are in the local district, and then, you have to follow the local district rules.
Which has already been established. And that's what I would say the south, be characterized as.
Right, the South Street area district, yep.
I believe, Katie, the next question is for Mr. Robley. Thank you, Ms. Como.
My leg fell asleep. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Como, for your presentation. Mr. Robley, it looks like there is, there's some eligible districts that aren't listed yet. And one of the things that does seem attractive, at least to me, is there's the area that is just basically just an idea. But I know that the, around the Fort Hill Cemetery, the National Park Service is rehabilitating the church, Sherri Tullman's former church, which is in that area, correct?
Yeah, I believe that's connected to the historic site because her home, the church and the house next to it and her grave are all technically part of the park. So, that's NPS, yeah.
That's NPS. One of the things I want to say is that, one of the reasons why I think that area has, there might be some incentive to look into having it National Historic Districts, is that I think that would incentivize developers to go into the neighborhoods and perhaps complement some of the development that's going around the National Park Service. You know, I mean, they're, the National Park Services, in the presentation we saw a few weeks ago, they're doing, putting a lot of money into the development of that area. And I do think that if there were similar kinds of, if there was interest in, for developers to go into the neighborhoods and use tax credits and to help restore, rehabilitate some of the houses in that neighborhood, it would complement some of the, what's happening with the National Park Service. So, I do see value. I also see that, you know, it doesn't tie people's hands in the property that live in that current district. So, I think that's important for the public to hear. But, you know, I'm interested in, you know, seeing, you know, what the appetite of the public is, if there's any potential property owners that would like to utilize some of the tax credits. I think that's, that's a good, would be good to hear. And also, just, I'm, I see it, I see this as a plus. And I think that especially as we're leveraging Auburn's history to have a National Historic District that extends into these, into other areas of the city, I think could be valuable. So, I personally would like to see us look into it.
I don't know who this would be for. Both answer either. You mentioned that the impetus for this to originally begin was to keep the government from coming in and wrecking something, basically. And so, that led me to think about eminent domain. And I think you made a reference to that when you said, if somebody wants to put a highway through your neighborhood, they can't just take your property. There has to be loops to jump through. And on the other side of that, sometimes there are times when taking property, for whatever reason, is, has to happen. So, could you just clarify? It doesn't mean that you, we can't ever take property, or not us, but the government can't take property if they really need to. But it's a higher level? Can you just explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so it just kind of, it puts a review process in place. So, it's not to say it can never happen. It's similar to if there's a wetland or something like that. Like, it's a balancing of needs, you know, that the idea is you would look for alternatives. You have to go through this process of can the adverse impact be avoided? If not, can it be minimized? If not, can it be mitigated? And if not, how do you do some sort of, well, some, you know, it may end up being that the historic property is lost, but it's documented or something like that, or there's some other form of.
They keep artifacts and they re-habit or whatever.
Yeah, so there are two, I think, people who would like to see more properties getting preserved, feel like the process isn't strong enough, you know, to save them. But of course, it's always a balancing of needs. And sometimes, it's, you know, it just works out that way, that something can't be saved and so, it's documented instead. Or there's some other, you know, other project that comes out of it. Do something good for historic preservation to balance out something bad that's happened. So, yeah.
Thank you. I have one other question. So, and I might have missed this, I don't think we got that detailed. But, so if we were to identify and become an historic district, I noticed when you talk about tax incentives, you have to be a contributing structure or a, I don't remember the term, a historic building? So, if you live within, so say that happens and you live within them, when that, when that happens, is there an inventory done so that, like, I might get a letter saying, I've been in my house. I might get a letter saying, "Your house is in it or not in it," or "You don't qualify because it's too new." So, you wouldn't know whether or not you would be part of this population that could take advantage of the tax credit?
Yep, so as the process goes ahead, the state has to notify every owner of a property within the district. And I think that letter typically just says that you are in the district because you're either in or you're out. But then, you also get the opportunity to look at all the documentation that's put together that lists every single building and says, "This one's contributing, this one's contributing, this one's non-contributing." So, that's pretty easy to find out, yeah.
So, part of the listing of the district will include very extremely detailed inventory of all the buildings and sites and objects, if there are any, and whether or not they're contributing and for what reason are they contributing. So, that's all in the documentation that goes to the state and then the park service.
So, and one final question or comment. To me, it's, we have really beautiful architecture and homes here that a lot of parts of the country will never have. And we're also trying to save that because we think that's an incentive. It's an investment and it's an incentive for new homeowners. So, I'm thinking this might end up being some incentive for people to keep property, one family, to not cut it off because they could actually participate in this tax credit opportunity. I'm guessing if you buy a house and you do things in the interior, then you might not qualify for the tax credit, right? Because there is some kind of a process?
Well, the Homeowner Tax Credit is pretty flexible in that regard. So, if you are hoping to get a tax credit for the work, then you would have to follow some, but I think on the interior, they're pretty flexible. I mean, I know people need new kitchens, they need new bathrooms.
Yeah, I'm thinking of like, I don't know, like really cutting it up a lot.
Yeah, right. But if you're, if you're.
Turning it to. Like, thinking of turning it to a multi-unit, you know? Although now, there's need for that, so.
Yeah, right. So, that could be, you could take a large old house and divide it into apartments. And that could be a project that would be eligible for the Commercial Tax Credit. tax credit if it's being done sensitively. And the commercial credit does have a lot more, um, stricter oversight in terms of what's being done. So you can't just divide it, you know, take a house that has been a single family and divide it into twenty apartments and think you're getting a commercial tax credit for that. But if you're sensitively able to make it into two, for example, you might. Um, and then, on the flip side of that, if you're converting it back into a single-family house, that would be a project eligible for the homeowner tax credit, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in, in looking at the eligible districts, um, I noticed that along East Genesee Street and then another eligible district is Chapel Street, North Street area, um, both of which contain two churches, which recently were the discussion of possibly closing. Um, so this is interesting to me because if that were to proceed, this would provide some incentive maybe for redevelopment of, of those structures. Um, to Councilor Cuddy's point, um, regarding the, the Tubman Park and the properties along Parker Street and the, and the Ami Zion Church, this eligible district doesn't actually extend down to Parker Street or to Woodlawn. Would we, or do we have an ability, or, or does a grassroots group have the ability to make an appeal to extend that?
Yes. So, um, when you first, when one would first reach out to the state historic preservation office to open up a discussion about that district, the boundaries are flexible at that point. Those are not set in stone, right there. Those are, those are more conceptual, and they, that's how they're depicted on the state's inventory website. Um, but, you know, I, I've worked on a number of district nominations myself, and they, they move all around. Uh, it's kind of an ongoing discussion up to a certain point. So, um, I think if you provided, if one were to provide that same rationale that, uh, Councilor Cuddy and, and yourself gave, it would not be an issue. It just bears discussion with SHPO.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Cassell?
I'll sit, sir.
First of all, thanks to Councilor Cuddy for bringing up the church on Parker Street. As most of you are aware, I grew up around the corner, so there's just another reason it should be a historic district in my own, in my own people mind. But most, how, to what extent would city staff be involved in this? You know, there, our, our staff is stretched pretty thin right now. I, I don't, I, I understand the, the concept and how good it would be, but I, I don't wanna keep...
No, that's a good question. I'm glad you asked that. Um, one of the things I, I meant to make clear is that we're not necessarily asking for anything from the city.
Okay.
We're just here to educate and inform. And, you know, hopefully you guys will talk to people and it'll spread a little bit. Um, but, you know, some of the ways in which the city might participate, uh, that's not to be established yet, would be sponsoring, sponsoring a grant application to pay for the listing, or, um, even just taking part in meetings with SHPO. Uh, so staff time. Uh, it could go a number of different ways. So depending on how the, the property owners respond, um, you know, we'll, we'll see where it goes from there. But, uh, PACNE is, is a, a nonprofit, and we're certainly able to sponsor grant applications on behalf of, of other groups as well, so.
I'm not opposed to the idea. I, I, I just wanna be mindful of our employees and, and how much their work may increase and what would suffer at the same time, so. Anyone else? Mr. Decker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Decker, bar graph reports?
Uh, yes, Mayor, we really don't have much of an update on those. They are what you see there. We've got one week left in our current fiscal year, so spending has slowed down over the last thirty or sixty days here. As we get to the end of the fiscal year, things are looking okay at this point. And as I mentioned before, sales tax is up, so that helps. Uh, it looks like we're still within budget, or in the overall budget, within most individual budgets. As you know, that, uh, come July first, it's not the closeout of the budget year. I mean, it's the, typically, it's the end of the fiscal year, but we will spend the next two to three months after that, uh, catching up and, and making sure everything's squared away, so. Right at the moment, unless anybody's got any questions? Anyone okay?
All right, thank you. Other business from the council? Council, Council Cuddy, please.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I am, um, wanted to at least start the conversation, um, about possibly, um, approaching DPW, Mr. Talbot, um, and perhaps identifying, uh, a site for, for more pickleball courts. The reason being is that every court in this area is bursting at the seams. I know that's not a priority, I get it. But, um, the, uh, the Casey Park is, is, is busy more than it's ever been. And, um, I, I was driving by St. Francis Park, and I saw how great those trees looked. And in the middle of that field, I had a vision of four pickleball courts. Now, I don't know, um, obviously, Mike and the staff wanna look at feasibility, but it does bring a lot of people to wherever they are, and it's the west side of town, it's, you know. But I, I just wanted to throw that out there to, to you and, and staff to, to look at, um, you know, what that would entail. We will do that.
Counselor, please, excuse me one second. I'll say, Counselor?
Yes, yes, I'll say.
I'm sorry.
It just reminded me to say this. Um, I've been noticing that we're doing a great job pushing out the fact that we now have programming in our, some of our city playgrounds and parks, and people are excited about it. Um, they have mentioned it to me. And this isn't anything we need to act on right now, but I just remember that when the time comes, when we look at Pomeroy Park, um, we have a ready partner in Seymour Library. They have been ready for years. They wanna work with the city. You know, I know that's, that's in the master plan for the, the parks, so I'll mention it again or remind us again, but they, they already have a full program for the summer for children, but they really would love to work with the city, um, and utilize Pomeroy Park when we get there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Cuddy, uh, we, Joe and I brought two of our grandchildren to, to the park in Owosco. They, they liked the playground there. And behind that was the pickleball courts. I assumed that's it, that's what it was.
Yes, yes.
I, I sat there watching, thinking, too old for that, but they seem to be enjoying it. So I, I, you know, anything to get out and, for exercise and, and, uh, for friendship and everything, it's, it's a great idea. I, I hope we can come up with some ideas or something, because people really seem to enjoy it, and I have no problem with that.
It's, it's, it's pretty popular. It's getting, it's getting more popular. When we, when Counselor Genatino proposed the, the court set in Casey, um, you know, it was a gamble, 'cause, you know, there were, there were some people that liked it. They're very, but it is, it has grown, and there's more people asking to learn how to play. And I do know that, um, in our summer programming, um, the tennis coach at Auburn, Shelley Connors, is, um, she, uh, for her open Mondays in the first three weeks of August, um, she's gonna have like a pi, open pickleball, uh, session, too. So, so, um, so again, like, it's, it's, it's growing, and, and I think that, you know, I just want the staff to, to look into some possibilities possible.
For life of me, I can't figure out why it's called pickleball, but there's a whole lot of things in life I don't understand, and I'll be the first to...
Mayor, the person that first developed it was named Mr. Pickle, so...
Really? I didn't even know that.
Was it Dill or Sweet?
I had an absurd theory that I'll share anyway. The way, when you hit the ball, it sounds like you're opening a pickle jar. That was just, that was my theory, but I like yours better.
Thanks.
It was, makes more sense.
So carrying it a step further, beer pong has to do with a beer bottle, right? It's time to call it a evening, I think, um...
Yes, yes.
Uh, any other business from the council? Second public to be heard? Is there anyone deserving to be heard this evening? Very well. Uh, do we have requests for executive session?
Uh, Mayor, we have a couple of quick updates. Two matters made confidential under our turn of questioning.
Very good. Does anyone else have anything to add to that agenda? We'll entertain a motion for executive session. Counselor Kent, second by Counselor Genatino. Please call the roll.
Motion for the executive session, six oh three PM. Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LoCastro?
Yes.
Aye. In recess for executive session.